This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, hello Jyoti, can you hear me? So, we are discussing now the Spring technology. What is a Spring? Spring is a framework. Spring is a framework. And it is not basically a simple technology, it is connection or combination of technologies, we can say. So, what is framework? Framework is nothing but collection of APIs, we can say. And we can we can have a integration with the Spring with any technology that might be Struts, that might be Ipannet, that might be Chap Street, that might be JPA or anything. So, Spring, when you say it's a combination of technologies, that means Spring got divided into modules. The models are core container, test model and D O layer, this is a layer, D O layer, web layer and A O P layer, core container layer and test layer. We have five layers. Test layer, core container layer, A O P layer, web layer and D O layer. So each and every layer has a model. The first layer that is a test when you see if you want to perform test.
I just have a small lot, the you're saying modules, right? Those modules are called components, right? Generally in the frontend.
No, modules, they are different, they are, you're talking about models, I think.
Okay. Module is like collection of what then?
Model is a, a model is a single model, okay? Test is a model. Core container is a layer, in that we have core model, beans model, context is a model, it's a part. Model in the sense, it's a separate part in that layer.
Okay.
We have layers, five layers. In the five layers, we have test and core container layer, A O P layer, this all together we call test. And finally, we call, we have a D O layer and finally, we have
Okay.
web layer. Are you getting me?
Okay, okay.
All these layers we have. And each and every layer has its own modules. Score and beans models and context model. Your core content has the models, core model, beans model, context model, expression language model. Your A O P layer contains A O P model, aspects model, instrumentation model. And your D O layer contains J D B C model, W A R M model, O X M model, J M S model, transactions model. Your web layer contains web module, submit module, outlet module, struts model. So on the four, five layers, we have the models. So we will be working on one by one. Let's start with the core container first. And before that, what if I would like to develop a Spring application? What are the minimum things which are required? If you want to develop a Spring application, we have to create a class. You have to create a class, create the XML file, create the XML file to provide the values, create the test class, load JAR files, run the test class, creator to create a Spring application. So to create a Spring application, what were things? Creating a class, creating XML file, creating a class which contains the main method. And JAR files, of course, it is required. If you are working with the J D B C, how O J D B C Oracle JAR file is required? Or in the same way, you're working with the Spring core layer, the core layer related JAR files only we have, we require. I have other layers, I don't want, I don't need to take that layer JAR files. I have to take only core related JAR files. Are you getting me? So what we are going to do is, we are taking one student class. In the student class, I'm having one parameter. The parameter is name. And here, I am writing a set method and get method for that parameters. I'm writing, I have a class called student and it has a parameter name. For this parameter, we have get name and set name. That means we are writing getters and setters. And after that, I have another method, display info. As part of this display info, as part of this display info, I am I am printing that name, whatever I have been set it from somewhere. So if I want to set the values for this class, what I have to do basically? If I'm going with the main method, what I have to do? Jyoti?
Main, in the main method, you have to create an object and then call the function. I mean, you have to set name, get name. When you create an object, you can use the object dot display info, then you can access this method. Because this class is acting like a bean class.
Perfect. What if I would like to give the values through?
You have to object name dot set name, in the brackets, you have to give some name.
Correct. Now, I wanted to inject the values by using a third party. In the Spring, I don't want to inject the values directly by creating an object.
From, you mean from the command line?
No, no, that's a different way, I'm going to say. Command line, you will give a values. That is, you cannot create a direct values to an object, you can pass through scanner and all, but what I'm saying is, I would like to inject the values of that type, that particular student class or something from additional or a third, third resource, third party resource by means of an XML file. I'll create an XML file and I'm going to inject the value. Why should I go for in such a way? It's very simple that we can inject a value directly by creating a class and you can inject the value. And why it is required to go with these things? Because
Maybe you have thousands of names.
Of course, it's something like that, but you see, what happens is, if I'm creating an object in any other class, that means your class, whatever in your class, whatever the object you are creating, your class has a depend and is depending on that particular class. You have a tight coupling over there. We don't want to go with that kind of injection. When I, we know what is easier relationship. We want to make it something extendable so that it will be easier for us to get that functionality. In the same way, instead of directly creating an object, we, we would like to, we would like, we would like to try in some other way to inject the values for the class. I would like to inject the values to the class in some other way. So for that reason, Spring provides you the concept called dependency injection. That means if you have any object values, if you want to inject a don't, you don't need to create a direct class object. You can use instead of that an XML file. You can use instead of that an XML file and you can inject the values. Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
That's how you can work out. Here, that's the reason, what we are doing is, for the student class, I would like to insert the values. Here, it is containing only one property. But in my class, I can have N number of properties. So for all of them, I can insert the values. So that what happens is, between the classes, I don't get any dependency. For that reason, we won't avoid the tight coupling. For that reason, we are going for such kind of injection. This is called injecting the values to the class. Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
So here, in terms of Spring technology, every, every class, for every class, whatever you are creating object and you are going to inject the values, they are all, they are all called beans. In terms of Spring, your class is called a bean. Bean means it's a reusable component basically. Bean means it's a reusable component basically. Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
So, the class name is student which is available in the package com.javatypoint and the class name is student. And for this class, I would like to inject the values. I'm going to create a reference. I'm going to create a reference. ID, it's something like when you are creating an object, student S one is equals to new student, I'll say. Where my S one is a reference of my object. In the same way
Student bean is the name of the bean class or it's just idea that we have just created?
Student bean is the reference of your student class.
Student, okay.
Object reference it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Hmm hmm.
And now, what we are doing is, property name is equals to, we are taking the property name. In the class, I have only one property, the property name is name itself. Take this property. If I say student S name, my property should be here, S name. But you are given, they are given same as name, that's the reason we are taking. Are you getting me? And the value of that property, I'm giving it as vimalj as well. Are you getting me? So, property name is name. The property name, if it is S name or S Y name, whatever it may be, if it is that, I'll be giving that name and I'll be setting the values. And then, the bean closed over here. And then, the beans got closed over here. So, your XML file contains collection of beans. Your XML file contains collection of beans. Your XML file contains collection of beans. In that case, your XML file is a beans factory. Collection of beans, we call it as a bean factory, what we call?
Bean factory.
Now, what we're doing is, we are creating the test class. Okay, we are creating the test class. And now, I need to get that XML file because I want to, to run this application. To run this application, either it should be a web application or it should be a standalone application. Now, our application, we are creating it as a standalone application. That means I need a main method. I've created a main method. I've created a main method, so I need to get that XML file. The XML file name is application context dot XML file. I've got that XML file. I've got that XML file and then, I'm going to set the values for that XML file. I'm going to set the values for the XML file. Sorry, I'm going to get the XML file and from the XML file, I want to get it, get that particular bean. My XML file, XML file name is application context dot XML file. Where I have configured my bean. My application file name is application context dot XML file. In the main method, I'm getting that XML file. I'm getting that XML file. After getting that file, XML file, I know that where is the XML file, I'm going to get it. Once after getting that file, I need to read what are the beans it contains. To create that beans, first I need to collect a factory. First I need to get a factory. So my XML factory bean, I'm going to take my XML factory, XML bean factory. And in that, I have something called, something called resource, I have something called the reference of my bean. My XML file can contain, it's as it is a factory of beans, it may contain any number of beans. But now, I have only one bean, that particular bean I wanted. So for that reason, what I'm doing is, after getting your factory of XML, you have, you want to get your own bean. What is my bean, student bean? And which is, we set it as an ID for your student class. I'm getting that bean and then, what am I doing is, I want to make sure that, that bean must be a type of a student only. I want to make sure that, that bean must be a type of student only. I'm getting that type, student type and on that, I'm calling student dot display info. I'm calling the display info, as you know that this display info contains a method which contains the parameter value. So, what we have done for this, we have set the value, the value we have set it, that is vimalj as well. And this value will be your output. Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
Any questions on this?
I was just wondering how that if we set value, it called the set name function.
Ah, you're wondering about, what, what did you say?
I put value equal to vimal, right? How did it know that it has to invoke the set name function? So definitely, we should have setters and getters for every variable we create.
Right. What we are doing is here, I'm setting, I'm taking the property value. I'm taking the property value. The property is the name.
But this way, we are just increasing the code without, we are just increasing the code to pages and pages which can be done in like one, two lines.
Correct. We are hundred percent right. But the thing is, for a simple name, we know that we don't need to create an XML file. If you see, when you are working with a project, Spring, why Spring got popular? When you are working with a project, you have different parts of your, parts in the application. You will be having Ipannet, you will be having that services, you will be having fronted, you will be having database. So who will make the communication between these things? Do you need to coordinate in a proper way? So, the best way to coordinating between these things is Spring. With the Spring, we have such a way, we can integrate with any technology. It's something like if I want to return some, some values to a J S P page, I cannot return directly. Yes, I can return, that's a different story. And I need to create a controller classes. If it is M V C, I need to create some controller classes. I may have a number of models, I may have a number of controllers. So in between them, so model and controller, in between them, in between model and view, your controller will act as a mediator. So that each and every model, I may have different view. So whose responsibility is to take care of these things? Okay, one controller will not be suitable for some hundred class, hundred models. Are you getting me? If I have in such, such kind of configuration, your subjects and J S P's are not suitable. Are you getting me? We need something else and who will coordinate with the Ipannet or who will coordinate with the database? That is difficult.
Okay.
Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
You got my point, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Spring, even if you want to give a simple value also, you're, you're, you're going with an XML file. It seems to be difficult. So we have, we think, we feel that we are making it complicated. What if you are working with a project? So when you are working with project, it is, it is going to simplify your task. Because project is not about a single technology and project is not about a simple page. It is a combination of multiple model classes and multiple controllers and multiple view pages. So how does it does and what does it does, we'll be seeing in the upcoming sessions anyway. Now, the point is, in this class, what we have done, in this application, we have done is one bean class. That is my student class. Bean is nothing but a reusable component. And then, an XML file to inject the values for that bean class. Once my XML file got prepared, I need to execute it. So if I want to execute it, I need a main class where the program execution starts from there. And in the main, I'm going to get XML file. I'm going to get a, I'm going to create that XML file and in the XML file, in the XML file, from the XML file, I should read a resource. That is bean factory. I'm reading a bean factory. I'm reading a bean factory and from the bean factory, I'm going to read particular bean. If I get a bean factory, I'll get a particular bean. With the help of that bean, with the help of that bean, I can read the data. This, this is my bean. So once I got the, so for this bean, what we have done for this bean, we have set the values. We have set the values for the properties, that's fine. Okay? And we are calling student in this frame. And now, what are the additional things we have to do? As it is a framework, we need to add some JAR files. As it is a framework, we need to add supporting JAR files. We need to add supporting JAR files. So what are the supporting JAR files we require? The first supporting JAR files we require is core and core JAR files, as it is a basic one, we need only core JAR files. Are you getting me, Jyoti?
Hmm hmm.
Okay, we have a couple of all the JAR files, different models, you have different JAR files. But we have, we are working on core, so we will be, we will be worrying about the core JAR files. Are you getting me? And then, and then, of course, you will be running your application. That's it. So this is about your simple Spring application. Okay, so in the future, we'll be seeing different applications and what is exactly the Spring. And now, what I'm teaching you is Spring third version. And we have Spring four, five and six also. But we will be seeing some differences between four and five, that's enough. That's enough. Okay, so four and five is nothing but, they have removed the XML files. And this is all about annotations based annotation. It's going to be an annotation configuration, it's going to be an annotation configuration. Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
So that's how it works out. Now, come to the next. How do you, and what are the things we have to learn? I, I need to differentiate with the Spring three, four and five. So that we will be seeing, but first, basic things we need to understand. First, you need to develop with the XML configuration and then you go with the next one. Then it would be easy. Are you getting me?
Hmm hmm.
And now, coming to the point, this dependency injection, I've talked about, we will see once again back, dependency injection. Dependency injection and dependency lookup. There are two terms we have to remember. One is dependency injection and the other is dependency look up. What is dependency injection and what is a dependency lookup? Dependency injection is something like this. Employee has an address. But what we are doing is, we are going to pass address as a parameter. Dependency injection is a design pattern that removes the dependency of the programs. In such case, we provide information from the external service source such as an XML file. So it makes your code to be loosely coupled and easier for testing. There are two ways we can perform this dependency injection, constructor and setter method.
Oh yeah.
And what is a dependency lookup? Depend, dependency lookup is nothing but, we are creating a new object directly in any class. If I want to, if I want to, if I want to get the functionality of any class, I need to create a new object, I need to create an object, then only I can get the functionality. So that means your class, let's say student and address class. If I create an address object in the student, that means student is depending on address. Okay, there we are tightly coupling. So that is your dependency lookup. But the dependency injection is nothing but, dependency injection is nothing but, we are not directly creating any object. Instead of that, what we are doing is, instead of the, we are doing that, what we are doing is here, we are going with an XML file and we are going to inject the files. That is all dependent. So here, the point when you say, we are avoiding, we are performing loose coupling. We are performing the loose coupling. Are you getting me?
Okay, that capital U P is
I'm sorry.
The first one I understood, A object equal to new and you know, maybe the subclass, can I call it? And then, in the next statement, what are we trying to do? We are trying to access a method which is in the kind of parent class, the capital A, that let's call that a parent class.
You see, you are creating an object directly or by factory method. A dot get, so you are getting the same way, the object only, but you are getting in a some other way. So this is also dependency injection. The best point is, you are creating a new object of a class, another class card that is called dependency lookup. Instead of that, what we are doing is, we are passing it as a parameter and we are going to set the values, not, not here, in some other place, we can set the values. So that is a dependency injection.
Okay.
So here, Spring provides you for this class to inject the values, we are not supposed to inject the values directly. We have an XML file, that's what it meant. Okay. So, that's how it works out. And so dependency injection can be done in two ways, by the constructor and by set methods and by the get methods. Dependency injection can be done in by two ways. One is by get method constructor and another is by, and another setters and getters. So these things are, we'll be seeing soon. So, these things are, we'll be seeing soon with an example in the coming up sessions. So, so, now today, I just wanted you to see what is dependency injection. And how it works out now, okay? And if you tell.
You want me to run the first application you just showed me?
No, 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 I'll run that application, okay? So, if you, if you want to try, you can try, that's not a problem.
Okay. But XML is like a, oh my, XML is still like a thing for me, but I'll try.
Oh, okay, tomorrow I'll show you an execution of this. So, here, no, third and then parallelly we'll be seeing four also and then the spring boot and then the angular and then Hibernet. So, very quickly and what are the important things, we will be focusing more. And the remaining things, anyway, you are good enough to catch easily, that's not a problem.
Yeah, Angular also I've started, it's, it's very easy when compared to React. React, I used to see like three to four times with all the components, everything, but Angular is making sense.
Oh, really, that's a good, that's a good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're, you're.
Just the, just the thing is that Angular, I don't know, maybe it's the node version. I mean, they, they are executing, I'm getting the outputs, everything is fine, just that I'm getting some. Uh, warnings with the class name. I thought maybe it's the version fault, but since the everything is running, I was like, that's fine.
That's okay, okay. So, that's fine, Jyoti, we have started now.
Mm hmm.
The ten days, ten sessions, spring with the Hibernet will be done. And with MVC, with Maven and Log4j, I told you, so these are all the things we'll be covering. Okay? I know if you look at it, that will be more better, okay? So, I asked you to go through with the procedures, have you gone through that, Jyoti?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I was just wondering, full stack means the frontend and backend, so database will also be covered, right? And that, I mean, generally asking, I, I don't know, interviews, they'll be touching the backend also, like database.
Hundred percent they'll touch.
Okay.
It depends on the trip. And the thing is, what the project you are maintaining.
Yeah, I've gone through subqueries, I've gone through procedures, DB functions in the sense, the predefined functions you are talking about.
Oh, yeah, there is something, procedures you got it, right?
Yeah, procedures I got it, it's the business logic, like you go, create one procedure and kind of. You use it every time so that you know your code can be reused also, if it is being frequently used, it will be there in the cache. So that you do not run the same code again and again.
Right. Here, we don't have actually, one minute, yeah, P L S K. As part of the P L S K, you'll be having. As part of the P L S K, you'll be having a procedure and.
Actually, I, I can study whole of this, I guess that should be fine. I didn't see it over here, so I was just studying some random sites from Google. But I can just study whole of this module, it should be P L S K, yeah.
So, in the spring, the flow would be very important. Apart from that, by the end, I'll give you a project. So, you need to execute the project and so that you can see, like, I have some couple of projects I can share it to you. So, based on that, you should be able to expose what you have done daily. So, that's what is very, which part you have done. And what the, and web services, of course, restful web services we are going to use and we are going to use Angular. So, all the stuff we have, these things we will be discussing, okay? So, major focus should be on these things, restful with spring MVC and with Hibernet, these things will be focusing. And spring out the applications, how we do develop, step by step, we'll be covering up, okay? If you can do this, the basic spring application, that would be better, otherwise, we'll be starting executing the programs from tomorrow.
Sure, sure.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then, see you tomorrow, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Hey, my there?